All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of October 17th, 2022. I would ask a clerk to help me with the roll, please.
Burton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman. Freeman is absent. McGee.
Here.
Mahal.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Fraser.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Nine present.
If you please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for our country, our community, and our freedom. We thank you for all the current military service members and the many veterans who have served in the past that have helped keep this nation free. We also pray, Lord, to thank you for our police and fire first responders in our community and throughout this country, and we pray for their safety. We ask that you give us compassion, patience, courage, and wisdom as we conduct our city's business here this evening. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen. I think we have one individual registered for public comment, but before we do that, I did want to just mention that we will have a groundbreaking for the new fuel center out on Genoa Road and I-90, Crystal Parkway. That will be October 28th at 11:00 a.m., so if anybody's keeping track, that'll be the first notice. There'll be more, but I did want to give you a heads up since we have determined that would be a good date. Also, we have registered with us this evening Mr. Rodney Riley. Mr. Riley, would you come up to the microphone, please, and state your name? Good evening. How are you? How are you tonight?
Good, very good. Thank you. All right. Good evening, members of the City Council and members of the public here as well. My name is Rodney Riley. I live at 909 Pearl Street here in Belvidere, Illinois. I'm also a member of the Boone County Board in District 3. I'm here tonight to address item number 10, Section C, under New Business Resolution Number 22, sorry, 2022-2024, to ask for repeal of the Safety Act. You are all here as elected members of the City Council by the citizens of your respective wards. I'm not going to stand here and accuse you of not doing your homework on this issue. It has been in the news and social media for over a year now. I'm not going to stand here and read the law to you word for word and give you my interpretation of what I think is going to happen on January 1st of 2023. I can only tell you that over 75% of the 102 states' attorneys in Illinois and almost all top law enforcement administrators in this state have issues with this act. Some, and more every day, have or will be filing a lawsuit against Governor Pritzker in opposition of this legislation. This should not be considered a political issue, as Republicans and Democrats states' attorneys have joined efforts in these lawsuits. What it does say is over half of 102 states' attorneys are not in favor of this law that was passed during the wee hours of the morning, being over 800 pages long with no time to review it at all. I proposed this same resolution to the Boone County Board in September of this year. It passed unanimously with Republicans and Democrats in support alike. I personally have over 35 years of law enforcement background, but you don't need my background to know that the proposed Safety Act is not about safety at all. I encourage you to support this resolution and join with the Boone County Board in asking for repeal of this legislation now. On another note, again, you, as myself, are all representatives and elected by the citizens of Belvidere and Boone County on all issues that come before you. While I may not agree with everything that comes before the county board, and at times my ideas and beliefs may not have the support of the majority of its members, I would never just stand up and walk out of a meeting that is still in session. In closing, I ask that you support this resolution and ask that all citizens contact their elected officials that supported this legislation when it was passed to do so today and ask them if they still do. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Riley, for coming this evening. Appreciate it. I think that's all we have registered under public comment. Moving along on the agenda, item 4A, Approval of Minutes. We have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of October 3rd, 2022. Could I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman McGee. Any corrections? Any comments? Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Public hearing, we have none. Under Special Messages and Proclamations, I had chatted with Chief Shadle, and probably now a couple of weeks ago, I guess, and there has been something that I had felt along with the chief that we needed to recognize. I think 10 million viewers already have. So with that, Chief, would you please come up and introduce our next item?
Thank you, sir.
The trap on Max.
I see that.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Council. One second. Let me get logged back in here. Need an IT person. Attorney Drola? Just kidding. There we go. All right. So every day, the members of the Belvidere Fire Department strive to provide service that exceeds expectations. It's in our DNA. It's in our mission statement. We are committed to be ready for any calamity that may occur. From the mundane to the tragic, we train daily, being ready and providing care as what's expected of us. We strive to do that and more. The difference between ordinary and extraordinary is one word: extra. We attempt to do the extra because that is the care we'd like to receive in our greatest moments of need. The little extra on a lift assist is picking up the things that they knocked over when someone fell. Or in the winter, shoveling snow to make sure the pathways to someone's house is clear so they don't fall again. Or in a fire, knowing fire behavior and practicing time and time again hose deployment to ensure that the fire is knocked quickly and to save life and property. But then afterward, climbing through the debris to find the family pictures of the kids from when they were young. Or going inside a crashed car and sitting with the patient as the car is being cut away from around them to comfort them, to let them know they're not alone. Or simply being a human and consoling someone who experienced a loss and not leaving until they know that everything possible was done for their loved one. Or like we were going to see in the video, we had some technical difficulties, rocking a newborn baby while the mother is being attended to. More and more, we are being filmed on scenes. Usually, honestly, it's a nuisance as people are showing videos of things that most wouldn't want shared. But in this case, a set of Ring cameras captured our members carrying out our mission to deliver extraordinary service, and that video went viral. As of yesterday, these two videos combined were viewed 16.5 million times, and the videos were liked by 2.4 million users. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the firefighters in this video before the mayor and the council and the community. Please hold your applause until I say all their names. Firefighter Winnie, firefighter Bullard, and Lieutenant Swanson. As a resident of Belvidere and as the fire chief, I thank you for your service that exceeded expectations. Thank you, guys. Anything you guys want to say? Nope. Thank you.
Well, don't leave, gentlemen. You know, I know the chief had done an excellent job, and you know, many times, fire department or police department, a lot of times, they make news because it seems like anymore the only news that sells happens to be bad news. In this case, Lieutenant Jason Swanson, firefighter Zach Bullard, and firefighter Todd Winnie, they exemplified everything that's great about not only our fire department, but the first responders and the fire service in general. And a little historical, firefighter Winnie, I actually have known him since he was a young lad, and I do mean young, but he played sports, baseball, for my brother and I in the community. He's a lifer, and it's wonderful to see that we have individuals that cared about the community years ago and still care about the community today. Firefighter Bullard, I knew your father. We went to school together, and we used to ride the bus together. And again, I think you as well exemplify everything that's good about Belvidere and you have carried on a tradition here that I think we definitely have about caring for our community members and our community. And Lieutenant Jason Swanson, I know that you are proud of not only what they have done, but you should be proud of yourself as well, and I am very grateful for all three of you. And I was mistaken. I thought it was 10-point million views, but it's 16 million and climbing, so I really appreciate it. Thank you all. I appreciate it. Thank you, Chief Shadle. All right. And then item 6B, we have Pam Lopez-Fettis with us here this evening with Growth Dimensions. Pam, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. You know, I always have to have the toughest acts to follow, don't I? There's been a lot of activity over the past year with our projects. We currently have 86 open projects. Forty-eight of those were open in this year alone. We've actually have had a significant number of enterprise-owned activities as a result of those projects. We had 36 enterprise-owned activity projects. Twenty-two of those have been industrial-related. These were for 25 businesses in our community that take advantage of the enterprise zone thus far. To date, we have had 190,000, over 190,000 in capital investment from those projects and another 38,000-plus in construction materials. Also, what we try to do is connect with businesses, new businesses, and returning businesses or existing businesses that we've initiated some contacts. So thus far this year, we've had 250 calls. 115 were new calls this year. 132 are ones that were already existing relationships that we had. You know, I also want to say that workforce development has been increasing as far as trying to enhance the growth of some of these communities, and we've been working with trying to build our entrepreneur base in which we had two facilitators trained just last month to deliver fast-track training in English and Spanish, and they're currently in the process of recruiting to deliver that class. We've also been working with the Workforce Connection, Rock Valley College, District 100, to participate in trying to build that pipeline and pathways. And we're focusing right now in careers in that there are limited training opportunities and limited people in the workforce. We know that's true of healthcare, but we also know specifically, mental health has been very needed these days as well as manufacturing. So we're working with outlining some of the skills and career options as well as opportunities, and also working with the Papa Grove Aviation Education Association to develop some partnerships and camps so we can help with the aerospace industry and automotive industry and try to develop that pipeline from, you know, youth above. We've also been working with a number of projects. We're working with Project Yukon, and that is currently an e-commerce and retail company that is looking for 100-plus acres. They're right now in the due diligence phase. We've also, Team Belvidere had a meeting with a representative for a new project. It's a state-of-the-art manufacturing company. This could potentially bring 65 jobs at $35 to $40 per hour. This would be $110 million capital investment for 100 acres of heavily automated manufacturing facility. We've also working with a commercial site near the site of Project Kelly, and we're continuing to work with some of the small businesses that have reached out to us for guidance for their growth opportunities. We are also working, trying to, we're also looking as a continuous improvement process to look at our ways in which we reach out to businesses and how we attract businesses into the community. So as part of our continuous improvement, we've been looking at our website lately and some of the data and the features and the information that we're providing and how people are getting to our website. As I mentioned before, we've been increasingly involved in geo-fencing, which has increased the amount of people coming to our website. As I mentioned before, I think that some of these seminars or these geo-fencing opportunities, what we basically do is take a seminar or a conference, and we send information to people on their phones or their electronic devices, and then these are information that might be pertinent to them and why they're there for that day, and that attracts them to our website. So we give them some, basically, ticklers where they come to our website, and then we track them while they're on our website, and where they go and what information is useful to them. So that has increased our website, our attention to our community from 111% to 465%, so an increase in activity. And our next process is really looking at our newsletters, in which you all receive. We actually send this out to about 2,100 people in and outside of our community every year. We have had approximately, well, actually, what we're looking at and seeing whether or not the information that we're providing has been beneficial and valuable to you and also, again, draws people back to our site. So we have had 250 calls over the course of this year. 115 are new calls, like I said, and 132 returning outside of that 2,100 that I've mentioned before. I'm available for questions if anybody has any. That's okay.
Any questions for Pam? All right. Hearing done. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome. I also wanted to say that, you know, I know that there's a lot of information I provide in a short period of time, so please, I'm open to everybody if you want to come sit with me one-on-one and ask me questions that are more pertinent to what your concerns are. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, item 7, Approval of Expenditures. We have general and water, general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $2,937,426.42. Could I have a motion for that? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Mahal. Those are in front of you, have been in your packet. If there's any questions, feel free to ask. All right. Hearing none. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Fraser.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. And we also have water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $622,309.12. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman McGee. Any questions? Any concerns regarding that motion on the floor? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $622,309.12, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Fraser.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. And for the record, we have item 8. For the record, A through H have been placed on file at the clerk's office. We have item 8I, Minutes of the Committee of the Whole Building Planning, Zoning, and Public Works of October 10th, 2022. Could I have a motion for their approval, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderman Snow. Any questions? Any corrections? Any comments regarding that motion on the floor? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And under item 10, New Business, we have for first reading this evening, ordinance number 608, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment within the general business district located at 105 West Harrison Street, and that will be back at the next council meeting. We also have item 10B, ordinance 601H for first reading, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment within the central business district located at 508 South State Street. That's a first reading again. And we have, under item C, Resolution Number 2022-24, Resolution urging the repeal or amendment of the Safety Act. Do I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Frank, second by Alderman Flurry. Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, please answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll.
Frank.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Fraser.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. And we have motions forwarded from Committee of the Whole Building Planning, Zoning, and Public Works of October 10th, 2022. Chairman Porter, could you help me out?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve the special use extension for 825 North Appleton Road, which is the Conservation District Solar Farm for one year.
Okay. We have a motion out of committee. Are there any discussion? Any questions? Any comments? Anybody may have? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion for the one-year extension for the Conservation District Solar Farm, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Fraser.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. And motions out of Public Works, Alderman Snow, could you help me out this evening?
Sure. B, Motion to Approve the Purchase of a 2015 Ford F-350 pickup truck from Belvidere Motors at the cost of $26,800. This vehicle to be paid for from the Water Depreciation Fund 04-09.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any comments, questions regarding the motion out of committee? Alderman Stevens.
I went and looked at this thing and was not impressed by it in the slightest bit.
Yeah.
It's got a lot of miles. It's not in the right shape. I think we can do much better by looking for a newer, brand-new car than this thing.
Well, I think one of the things that we've run up against is our budget, you know, and I don't mean that tongue-in-cheek either. You know, I guess, and I'm not going to speak for Brent, he's quite capable of that, but I know when we had talked about this, we had tried to find something better than what we had, and the one that we had was in really, really bad straits, as well as a Tommy Lift on it. I think the truck itself was pretty much rusted out, and the Tommy Lift was rusted. And the question is, if we buy a new one, to replace one that we have now, that I don't know how long that thing would even be roadworthy or we would be able to use it to accomplish what our goals are for its use, but I know they're hard to find, and I know they're very expensive because I've been pricing trucks and I've been putting it off getting, myself getting a truck for the last two years. And it is, they are pricey. You know, I don't know. I guess I wouldn't extend any comment to Public Works Director Anderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The vehicle itself, it might not be the best, but considering the condition of our current vehicle, this new one that we're proposing to purchase is a lot better off than that one. For $26,800, I think is a good price for that vehicle, and I think it'll provide us the service that we're looking for at this time for that.
Yeah. I think as long as, you know, we're comfortable that it will Okay. I think as long as, you know, we're comfortable that it will, you know, it's not a new vehicle. We didn't pay a new price either for it. But will it satisfy what we need to accomplish versus the one that we had that's, as I had said before, probably on its last leg? Brent has been accused of being cheap. I have always told him he's not, he's not cheap, he's frugal. And so I think, you know, when we look at, will this be a long-term solution? It is a 2015. What's the one that we're changing out? What was that?
It's a 2005.
2005. So if we get anywhere near the use out of this one, as times have it right now with the appreciation that we're facing, it's probably a pretty good deal. But I understand, Alderman Stevens, your sentiment. I get it. We would like to have something new, but as we all know, we've got some other obstacles that we're going to face financially. So it's up to the council what you choose. Any other comments? Alderman Porter?
Just a quick question. Approximately how many miles do we put on a truck like this in a, in a year? Do you have any idea?
We don't put a lot of miles on our trucks because they stay straight in town. So, we've got, I think, a little over 100,000 miles on that 2005, but that's 100,000 miles of in-town driving around town. So, as far as mileage goes, it's not really a factor for us because we don't, we don't drive that far with those trucks.
Okay. Any other comments, any other questions, any other concerns? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to purchase the 2015 Ford F-350 from Belvidere Motors at a cost of $26,008, out of the water depreciation fund 04-09, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Mohal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
No.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you.
C, motion to approve the proposal from LAI Limited in the amount of $48,000 for the replacement of the wastewater treatment plant RAS pump number two. This work to be paid, paid for from the plant depreciation fund.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Any questions, any concerns, any comments regarding that motion? As you can see, there was some discussion, and I know you recall it, to rebuild an existing pump for $30,000, or a new pump that actually is going to be more efficient, I think, is what we had talked about. So, any comments, any concerns? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mohal.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. And item D, Alderman Snow?
D, motion to approve the proposal from RNOW Inc. for the purchase of Insight Vision Sewer Inspection Camera in the amount of $7,442. This work to be paid for from the sewer depreciation account.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding that motion out of committee? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mohal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you very much, and thank you, Alderman Snow, for helping me out. Motion's out of public safety. Chairman Stevens?
E, motion to approve a block party request for 1451 Pondview Drive on October 22, 1922, from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Any discussion regarding that motion? Alderwoman Frank? Yeah.
1922.
I didn't know if you... All right, we have a motion.
Showing your age.
Yeah, right. All right. So I think the only thing that was modified, concerned at the committee level was the hour, the hour of, was 11:00 PM, and I think that's 9:00 PM now. So, any other questions, any other... Yeah, comments? Okay, all those in favor will answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mohal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. Alderman Stevens?
F, motion to accept a $1,500 check, number 601921325, donated by Gordon and Linda Nice to the Belvidere Police Department.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Any comments, any questions regarding that motion? Okay. All those in favor will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mohal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. And item G?
G, motion to approve using the $1,500 from Gordon and Linda Nice donation to purchase an Apple iPad Air keyboard and stylus in the amount of $1,277.54.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any comments, any concerns regarding that motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mohal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. And Chief, would you please, again, convey our appreciation to Gordon and Linda Nice? It's not often that we find individuals that are willing to do that. I think it says a lot about how they feel about your department. So, thank you.
Yes, I will, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before item 11, we adjourn. I wanted to go into a brief executive session, if we could, please. The executive session is under item 2C, 2 of the Open Meetings Act, to discuss collective bargaining. Could I get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman McGee. Clerk will call the roll. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, nay?
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mohal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion passed. We'll just give it a few minutes here. It wasn't on the agenda, and I-